Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and open our meeting tonight. Madam City Clerk, would you be so kind to call the roll?
Thank you, sir. Mayor Jean Goss.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Edward Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Rachel Erzmann.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Krebs.
Here.
And Councilmember Robert Parkhurst.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum this evening.
Thank you. Tonight, Mayor Pro Tem Garcia will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Inspiration.
If you're able, please rise and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. So, this was a packed week for the agenda of the council. On the last five days, we've been doing a lot of things. But one thing in particular obviously stands out. Two days ago was the anniversary of September 11th and the tragedies that occurred during that time. And many of us from the council did attend the memorial service that was held at our Public Safety Building and hosted by our Fire Department and Police Department. And as many of you here know, life has changed since that day, 21 years and two days ago. You know, I reflect on that and I look at my children and they don't know life before that. We lost a lot of innocents on that day. But I just want to express my gratitude. As I sat there and reflected during our moments of silence, stood there, rather, during the moments of silence on Sunday morning, the words spoken before and after by our fire chief and our police chief really rang in my head that, especially when they're spoken out loud by somebody in uniform, that we lost a lot of people that bravely stormed into a building to save others. And it's just not 9/11. It's other days. And it's just the spirit of our public safety that I am inspired by. That when they dedicate themselves to saving us when everybody else would probably run away. And we should be in awe of that. And when someone in uniform says that out loud and reflects on that, if I was in uniform, I'd be frightened to think about that. But today, I just want to express gratitude to our men and women in uniform. And thank you for everything that you do for us and thank you for everything that you will do for us. And thank you for the spirit of service and love for this community. That's it.
You're here. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Let's turn our attention to the agenda for the evening, please. And I'd like to get a motion for approval or amendment.
So moved to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We have an agenda. Mr. City Attorney, would you please, well, we don't have a last closed session. Can you please report out a closed session for us?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council did meet in closed session, but there is no reportable action taken.
Okay, thank you. Now, we need a motion for approval for reading resolutions and ordinances.
I move to approve reading ordinances and resolutions by the title only and waive the reading in full.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And now have a look at the meeting minutes from August 23rd. It was a very short meeting. Mercifully so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I had a question about one of the items on there. On page three, I think, of the minutes. On page four, near the top, we're in the section about the California Office of Traffic Safety. And there's a public comment, and the public comment is from Pat Alcorn about the rebuttal to the ballot initiative, which was the, I think, the next item on the agenda. Is that, should that be moved? I'm trying to remember from my, I didn't catch it in my notes. Should Ms. Alcorn's comment be moved to the following section? Or did she actually come up and speak about the ballot initiative under the Office of Traffic Safety?
The comment has been amended within the minutes to reflect, and it's been moved further down in the position.
It did get moved, okay.
So it has been amended, okay.
Thank you.
Any other issues with the minutes? Is there a motion in favor of the amended minutes?
Moved to approve the amended minutes.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And now have a look at the meeting minutes from August 23rd. It was a very short meeting. Mercifully so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I had a question about one of the items on there. On page three, I think, of the minutes. On page four, near the top, we're in the section about the California Office of Traffic Safety. And there's a public comment, and the public comment is from Pat Alcorn about the rebuttal to the ballot initiative, which was the, I think, the next item on the agenda. Is that, should that be moved? I'm trying to remember from my, I didn't catch it in my notes. Should Ms. Alcorn's comment be moved to the following section? Or did she actually come up and speak about the ballot initiative under the Office of Traffic Safety?
The comment has been amended within the minutes to reflect, and it's been moved further down in the position.
It did get moved, okay.
So it has been amended, okay.
Thank you.
Any other issues with the minutes? Is there a motion in favor of the amended minutes?
Moved to approve the amended minutes.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And now have a look at the meeting minutes from August 23rd. It was a very short meeting. Mercifully so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I had a question about one of the items on there. On page three, I think, of the minutes. On page four, near the top, we're in the section about the California Office of Traffic Safety. And there's a public comment, and the public comment is from Pat Alcorn about the rebuttal to the ballot initiative, which was the, I think, the next item on the agenda. Is that, should that be moved? I'm trying to remember from my, I didn't catch it in my notes. Should Ms. Alcorn's comment be moved to the following section? Or did she actually come up and speak about the ballot initiative under the Office of Traffic Safety?
The comment has been amended within the minutes to reflect, and it's been moved further down in the position.
It did get moved, okay.
So it has been amended, okay.
Thank you.
Any other issues with the minutes? Is there a motion in favor of the amended minutes?
Moved to approve the amended minutes.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have meeting minutes. That brings us to Mayor and City Council Reports. Who would like to go first?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Krebs?
Mayor Pro Tem was not joking when he said we had a lot of city-related activities over the last week. I will just go to the highlights because I'm sure other folks will mention theirs as well. But we all attended the League of Cities Conference last week in Long Beach, where city officials, both elected and staff, you know, gather from the entire state. And it was just a great three days of idea exchange and talking to folks who serve their cities that are similar or mostly very different and facing different and similar challenges. So I think it was a really, it was a great time, both for that purpose and frankly, it was a nice time to spend with the other council members and just, you know, sort of spend time not focused on official business and, you know, sort of just get to know each other more personally. So that was great. Upon return on Friday, I think a few of us were in attendance on opening night at the Sierra Madre Playhouse, which has a fantastic new play out centering around one of the early female scientists in the astronomy field. And just an amazing, amazing production. I just, the acting was very good, the writing was very good, the staging was great. I just really highly recommend it. So for those of you who are interested in theater, I would highly recommend. And those of you who are interested in astronomy, I would highly recommend. Or early women scientists. There's so many things to recommend this production. And then I would say, I also attended the 9/11 ceremony on Sunday. But the night before, I had the pleasure of attending the St. Rita School's Centennial Celebration. Some of you may know, my youngest son spent two years there this, these past two years. So it was nice to both be there in an official capacity, but also as a parent of an alum. So that was really nice and it's really great that they've been a part of our community for so long and they contribute so many things. So it was nice to celebrate them. And then here we are tonight.
Yeah. Councilmember Parkhurst?
Sure. Yeah, so I went back even a little bit further, realizing that we haven't met really since the end of July. And so, you know, that included things like the National Night Out back in August. That was a really nice event here. It was, but we haven't had a meeting that really to discuss for council reports. So I just wanted to recognize, you know, the great work that went into that. I also went on the water tour and got to see the, you know, some more detail on the water, the water distribution system, and that was very well attended by many people in our community. So I want to thank the Water Department for putting that on. And I also was at the St. Rita Centennial on September 11th. And we also had a ribbon cutting on an eagle project over at the basketball courts, which was really, you know, nice and really well done. Congratulations to Abbott Fluckey and his hard work on that. And hopefully, he'll grab up his eagle soon. And at the Cities Conference, two of the ones that jumped out at me was some work, some information on license plate readers and how those can be well-used within the city. Stolen vehicles is one of our largest items, our public safety items, our police items in the city. There's some really good ways to do that, that handle public safety and privacy. And then there was some great work on, some great sessions on on-street dining that I look forward to discussing with staff and kind of thinking through how we can continue to improve and enhance our on-street dining. And apologies, I just have a couple more things. Clean Power Alliance, four meetings, not huge to report there. But it's a leverage into, you know, the four days that we had of energy alerts. And I want to share a little bit about that because it's some interesting, some important and also troubling things happened during then. On average, our state uses 30 gigawatts of energy at peak. But when, on a hot day, that increases to 50 gigawatts. So on September 6th, I think, we all remember, we got that alert on our phone, kind of like an Amber Alert. And within 15 minutes, we dropped 1 gigawatt worth of energy, and within 30 minutes, 2 gigawatts. So I'm a little bit reminded of a, an old comedy routine, you know, what's a watt? What does it mean? What is a gigawatt? To give you a perspective, 2 gigawatts is equal to the Diablo Canyon Nuclear Power Station. So we were able to take, in 30 minutes, take 2 gigawatts of demand right off the grid. But we also avoided blackouts. Why did we avoid blackouts? We avoided blackouts because of batteries. We have added more batteries, we have added more batteries than nuclear on the grid now. And that's the reason why we didn't have rotating outages. And this is why, you know, when I come up here and I'm always talking about CPA and always mentioning how involved we are in it, this is why. This is why it's important. That's the somewhat silver lining side of things. We also had three days of what I would call rolling outages in the canyon, which are very troubling. It's unacceptable. Staff and I have both reached out to Edison. We want an after-action report on it, figure out what happened, why it happened, and how to avoid it in the future. So I'm sorry for the long report, but thank you for the time.
We've been out of commission for a while, so we have to make up ground, right? Councilmember Erzmann?
I'll just, to be very brief and share at League of California Cities, three themes that I think stood out pretty significantly. One is just local control and the challenge that we, as local city officials, local government have had, progressively have been getting a lot more challenging, considering what the state is requiring local governments to do. So as much as I know, we sometimes complain about it here, it is definitely resonating throughout the state. And, you know, what are some of the things that we can do about that? The second is housing, which again, should not be a surprise. But the third one was, it's strangely and ironically, been a good couple of years in terms of revenue, considering some federal sources that have come through to our local government. But I think there's also concern as to what happens in the upcoming years. But it's something you think about as we continue to strategically plan, to plan about the upcoming year and what our budget looks like and how we maintain the services that we provide as a city and how we prioritize things.
It's hard to add much from these previous reports, but the league was, it was good to collaborate and see other elected officials and staff members from other cities in order to get ideas for what's going on. And obviously, one of the sessions that caught my eye last year and caught my eye this year was the session by, given by CalPERS on the investment side, not the liability side. But it was done very well. Generally, the CEO of CalPERS, Marcy Frost, would give that, but she fell ill. And so they sent one of the directors of investments down. And he gave a wonderful presentation on the investments. And why does that matter to us? Well, because the fact that they are looking into being a little bit more creative and with their investments, yet trying to have safer investments and spreading, kind of spreading the pie, means that as long as they are getting returns better than the S&amp;P 500, which they did. There was, it was negative 6% last year, last fiscal year, whereas the S&amp;P 500 in the fiscal year was down over 20%,. So the CalPERS Fund does well. That matters to us because when it doesn't do well, a lot of times, they'll drop the discount rate, they'll do all kinds of things, which means that the city has to, and the employees sometimes have to come and put more money into the pension fund. So we're hearing hopeful things about the pension fund. We're doing great things here as a city regarding the pension fund, but in our obligation. But when they're doing better in Sacramento, we're all going to be doing better. And that means there's more money left over for the things that we enjoy here in our full-service community. Just kind of piggybacking on what I said earlier, the play at the Playhouse was great. I laughed. I even shed a tear or two. It was, I think, perfect for this community of Sierra Madre, being so close to JPL and Caltech with the astronomy thing. And I thought it was fantastic. Well done. Then we had Abbott Fluckey's basketball court rejuvenation, new backboards, painted the lines in Sierra Madre colors rather than white. And it actually, it looks very, very nice. And I'd like to, once Abbott receives his eagle, I'd like to invite him here and so we can give him a big round of applause and thank you, which should be pretty soon. I attended the St. Rita Centennial as well, and that, I went to the mass. I couldn't attend the celebration after the mass, but Mayor Goss did present during the mass. And it was very well attended. It was nice to see their sanctuary full. And it was nice to talk to residents outside of council chambers. I talked about the 9/11 celebration. I just want to piggyback on Councilmember Parkhurst's comments about energy. Yes, it's concerning to all of us up here, what happened in the canyon. And I'll assure you, and I met with City Manager Reynoso today. He is hot on getting an after-action report up there, figuring out what happened in the canyon, why they had those blackouts, or why, you know, everything went dark a couple, a few days. And we're going to try to find a solution to that. Even though it's Edison, it's still our responsibility to make sure our residents are taken care of and being safe. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Gosh, I'm going to add, speak things you've already heard, but I'll just keep it fairly brief. I did go to the play Silent Sky Friday night, grand opening. And it was as advertised. It was wonderful. First-class production. As mayor, I was asked to speak for a few, just a minute or two before it started. And that was a great honor because the people that are associated with that Playhouse are very fine people. I hope that people watching will consider buying a ticket to that show. And believe me, you will not regret it. Saturday afternoon, I did represent the city at St. Rita Church. As the parish is celebrating the 100th anniversary of St. Rita School, I gave a presentation, presented a certificate of recognition to the principal up on, in the sanctuary at the end of mass. And it was doubly honored because my son is a 2017 graduate of St. Rita School. So it was very special for myself and my wife to be there and participate in it. And yes, the celebration afterwards was really, really quite something. They went all out. Just a wonderful, wonderful afternoon. And yeah, Sunday morning, 6:45 a.m., had a really good attendance at the 9/11 ceremony. Very, it's always inspiring. You see so many of our fellow citizens get up in the morning and come out and honor those who had fallen and honor our first responders. So everything that's been said about that up here, just ditto from me. The Cal Cities Conference last week, just a couple of comments. I went to a presentation with Councilmember Parkhurst on fire, what we've learned from wildfires. And we got to hear from the people who were up at the, running the City of Paradise when, about four years ago, when the fire went through there. And just a real eye-opener. They actually thought they had followed guidelines pretty well, and they thought their city was pretty well-hardened. But what they said, they didn't realize, is it wasn't hardened against one of these super fires that we're now seeing, that come in much harder and much faster. And you just don't have the kind of time to react the way you used to. 27,000 people were living in that city that night. 5,000 had housing a few hours after the fire went through. So they're rebuilding, they're making progress towards rebuilding. But they shared a lot of things, that they suggested that municipalities in similar situations, of course, were in a fire zone, can think about. So I hope to begin conversations like that here in the very near future. And also, I went to the presentation that Mayor Pro Tem talked about. And I know CalPERS will bore you, but I just want to remind you, the work of this council, we have got our CalPERS liability down to, we're paid up 85%, which is, when we tell people at that conference, they're just going, what? Is that possible? So he and I have particular interest in this, and everything he said is true. I'll just add that I was very impressed with the investment officer there representing CalPERS. He was sharp, and I kind of got a renewed confidence in that enterprise because from time to time, they get kind of a bad rep. And I was handed some announcements from the city right before I sat down. The Fire Department will be hosting their 35th Annual Fire Prevention Festival on October 8th. That'll be 8:00 in the morning to 12:00 noon, October 8th. That's at Memorial Park. And at the same time, our first, hopefully, our first annual Sierra Madre Car Show, put on by our Firefighters Association, will be held the same day out on Sierra Madre Boulevard, which is going to, I think, be really nice. And also, the Senior Community Commission is hosting their first art show this Friday, the very first one. September 16th. It's in the afternoon from 4:00 to 7:00 over at the Hart Park House. And that concludes my report. Okay, moving right along. Now, I'm going to open up the floor for public comment on anything that is not on our agenda. You'll be allowed three minutes to speak. We do ask that you fill out a yellow comment card before you come up to the podium, and the city clerk will call out names from those cards. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have several comment cards. The city also did receive a number of emails for items not on the agenda. 56 emails received in total regarding items not on the agenda. The emails were forwarded all to City Council for review and consideration. They've been uploaded to the city's website for public access and transparency. The first speaker card that I've received is from Kristen Stevens.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Stevens. I live on Grandview. Thank you for this opportunity to ask you to consider the findings from a peer review of CD SA's noise studies for Alverno by MD Acoustics that you were sent. Out of an abundance of concerns and inconsistencies when it comes to Sierra Madre's master plan and city code, regarding noise, we felt compelled to follow up with the firm that the City of Sierra Madre has actually used for the master plan housing, she called it overlay. Neighbors were presented a partial sound study in slides at the May 2022 Expansion Meeting by Alverno. Alverno would not release the noise studies to the neighbors, although we asked. At last minute, we received them through the agenda on 9/1, or just prior to the 9/1 city meeting, 800 pages. I spent literally till 4:00 in the morning trying to make notes, and things were just not coming up right. So I scrambled, I talked to other neighbors. We decided to get a peer review on CD SA's sound studies that were being used to create the CUPs for Alverno and the Villa by MD Acoustics. We provided these peer reviews to the Planning Committee Commission just ahead of the 9/1 meeting. The review found substantial deficiencies in CD SA's noise studies. These issues do not appear to be considered by the Planning Commission when discussing conditions related to the noise and traffic at the 9/1 meeting. There were two items to speak on. The second one, I got up and spoke about that. The studies didn't measure the pitch of piercing high-end sounds that shatter our concentration and conversations. Two, when asked by neighbors, CD SA admitted at the spring meeting that their studies did not measure the vibrations generated from low-frequency noise that is transmitted into the neighbors' homes during rentals and school use activities/events. This type of unwanted noise is a major complaint when it comes to Alverno's party rentals. Example, vibrations from bass-heavy music, film generators running for hours on end, and other use of amplification with their PA system by the school staff. Amplification that is not allowed under the CUP on the soft field, the sports field. Instead, Alverno has been cranking up their PA system on the hardscape of the Michelinda parking lot in the concrete quad during rentals and school use. Thank you for the opportunity. I have sent you the peer reviews. I know you're not discussing it or actually reviewing it like the Planning Commission, but I need to make some noise myself and get this, we cannot use CD SA's studies as they are. They're flawed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Gary Hood.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. I left a packet in front of you, and it's not meant to scare you, yes. But it's important to realize how important the city council is. Because through your guidance, it becomes the safety of our community. Now, this is just an example that this needs to be considered. And I'm sure I'll give a copy to the fire chief. But this needs to be one of the considerations that EOC has to address because it is a potential problem. Disaster preparedness is something that a lot of people just, like, breeze over. Or if you give them something, sometimes it's like you're trying to scare people. But through good disaster preparedness, we keep our city safe. And everything comes through you guys. And it's important to get the right message out there to the people. And especially when it comes legally through the council on what is legal to do here in the community as far as coming from our city attorney. Giving out poor information causes problems in the community. It's caused problems for me with people that I consider my friends. But when there's bad information, it's not fair to the community. But when there's bad information, it's not fair to the community. Councilmember Parkhurst was talking about the electrical, the battery backup. This is very important. Because interesting, with all the heat, people lost power. Some people have medical problems that they can't handle that kind of heat. So I thought it was very commendable for the city to have places where members could go, where they could be cool. I think it was at the Park House was one. And City Hall was another one. You had for people to come if they needed an air conditioning. But this is important to get the right information out there to the community. And it's important for the council to show good guidance in making our community safe. The Fire Department, I don't know if you guys know them. Maybe the fire chief can correct me. We do not have ladder to go up to the roof of a two-story building. Is that correct, chief? Can only reach the window of the second story.
Gary, we can't engage you on that.
Anyway, the last I knew, the city did not have a ladder to go to the roof on the second story of a building. And this is important. Also, when you're looking at construction. And you have houses that are too close together. Whoop, I've got a second left. There we go. I see the mayor looking at it. Anyway, appreciate the council trying to make sure the information we get in the community is factual and truth. And if it comes through the city attorney's office, it should be correct. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Deb Sheridan.
Good afternoon, council members. Deb Sheridan, Valley Vista Drive. Tonight, I am representing Preserve Sierra Madre as the chairperson. For the last two years, we residents, the same residents who have voted you into office to represent us, have spoken at City Council and Planning Commission meeting after meeting about the proposed ill-designed Meadows project at the monastery. We have presented documented fact after documented fact about why this project is only in the best interest of the developer, no one else. We have pleaded with you to schedule experts who have not been paid by New Urban West developers. But Mayors Goss and Arizmendi refuse to do so. This has violated the general plan in so many ways. And as the experts we consulted have verified. We have listened to the lies and misinformation spouted by a few so-called neighbors whose ads in the local paper have been paid for by the developer dinners, too. We Steering Committee of Preserve Sierra Madre have said since our inception in 1977 that we are the fact-finders. Tonight, we are officially endorsing the initiative to place the Modern Doloresa property into this hillside management zone, just like every other large property abutting the mountains. Because the Meadows plan violates the general plan in so many ways. We are again asking you, council members who we voted for, to make decisions that will benefit our town, to wait until November 8th and let the voters decide. Thirteen hundred certified residents signed the petition to allow this to go forward. You have already said they were misinformed. Another lie. The petition and Measure HR were composed by a well-respected land use lawyer paid for 100% by Sierra Madre residents. And yes, I verified that fact. The city manager and the city lawyer were wrong about 68 houses if this passes. That is 68 houses on the total 35 Modern Doloresa property, not the 17 acres, which the judge in the lawsuit ruled, quote, "which would take decades and decades to do," unquote. Shame on you, Councilmember Arizmendi, for not stating the whole facts in the Mountain View's news. I am speaking today because I planned my short trip around the September 13th meeting, only to learn that you will be having a mysterious planned special meeting on the 15th. Why are you hurrying this along? We've asked you for the past two years to do your homework, and I'm hoping you will this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is John Lloyd.
Thank you. Good evening. Mayor Goss, Mayor Protem Garcia, council members, John Lloyd, East Laurel. I'm speaking to you tonight about the recent decision to remove the bike lane in front of the library on Sierra Madre Boulevard, eastbound. Removal of the library bike lane creates a hazard for cyclists and drivers alike. The need for parking must not come at the expense of safety. The diagonal parking creates a visibility hazard for traffic backing into the street or exiting the library driveway. It also forces people on bikes to merge into the travel lane while simultaneously steering clear of cars possibly backing out into the street. A difficult, stressful move even for an experienced cyclist. Drivers get impatient and aggressive toward bicyclists who are in their way. And the removal of the bike lane creates a conflict zone. We don't need more conflict between cyclists and drivers in Sierra Madre. Unfortunately, bicyclists will pay the price for the city's hazardous road design. When, and not if, a collision occurs, it will not be an accident, but a predictable result of bad road design. The city should be enabling more people to choose active transportation alternatives for many of our local trips. But the city must make it safe for people to do so. This does the opposite. Would you feel safe letting a family with young children bike to the library on that route? If not, we must go back to the drawing board. We cannot encourage active transportation if we do not make it safe and comfortable for people to bike. Biking in town should not be a stressful obstacle course. The city touts health and wellness, but we can't do that if our streets are unhealthy. The city supports sustainability, but we can't do that if our streets marginalize sustainable transportation. I'm requesting that you restore the library bike lane. Our bike lanes should be improved, not removed. Finally, the removal of the bike lane underscores precisely why Sierra Madre needs a comprehensive, forward-thinking, active transportation plan. I strongly urge you to attend an upcoming Community Service Commission meeting where an update on this issue will be discussed in more detail. This is an issue that we really need to engage as a community. The bike lane removal is a major step backward for safety, health, and sustainability. In the future, we can and must do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is William Ray.
Hi, Mayor, City Council. Appreciate the moment. I'm up in, on Laurel Avenue. I'm friends with John, also an electric bike rider. And I'm not going to repeat what he just said. I just say I want to echo that thought and speak in a broader term of the possibilities of Sierra Madre being a place where the electric bike can be embraced. And I don't see that there was any agenda on the angling of it. I think it was of the parking spaces. My assumption is, there is a priority, because there's so many cars here now, for more parking. So it just seemed like a no-brainer just to add a space or two doing that. I don't know if much thought was put into endangering, in this scenario that John laid out for you. But I just wanted to say in broad strokes, I've been here since 1995. My grandfather's been, was here since '52. And it was always a quiet little paradise town. It still kind of is, but I would say the only thing that's not quiet is the increase in the amount of traffic in the last 10 years. And that would be my only complaint about Sierra Madre. So how do we get people to, for there to be less traffic? Well, everybody has to drop their kids off at school. Everybody wants to come to a small downtown. If bike, if electric bike riding could be encouraged, this is a much safer alternative. It's really fun. As an older person, it makes you young again. You don't think you can ever get on another bike, on an electric bike, you can't. And I think that there's such a small downtown area, this would benefit everybody. So I'm hoping that in the future, when these kind of decisions are made, a little more thought is put into, how can we encourage foot traffic and biking? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Susan Neuhausen.
Good evening, mayor and councilwomen and men. I'd like to bring to the attention of the public that the mayor and the city council members wrote and signed off on an argument against Measure HR for the voter pamphlet, which contained false information that would be used by voters to determine their vote on Measure HR. We brought suit, and the city council lost in court. This false voter information was provided to the city council by city attorney Garagosian, and his firm represented the city council in the lawsuit. Rather than blaming the citizens for the cost to the city, which Councilwoman Arizmendi did in a recent op-ed in the Mountain View News, the cost should be borne by Mr. Garagosian's law firm, both for what they charged the city and for Protect Sierra Madre's attorney fees. In the judge's decision, he stated, "The statement is not just imprecise, it is false. No matter whether a commercial entity or an individual, no single person could develop the property's 35 acres into 68 units. Neither SB 9 nor the city's SB 9 ordinance would permit it. Yet the statement's plain meaning is that a single developer could build up to 68 units on the property." In a previous city council meeting, Mayor Goss made the statement that supporters of Measure HR were uninformed. It seems that it's the mayor and the city council who are uninformed and putting out false information, even though several months before, they had been presenting correct information by Mr. Garagosian. All of them seem to have no recollection, and they also did not bother to check that what they write and say is true. This also points out that the city council needs to do their own due diligence and not rely on the city attorney and city staff. You, the city council, have shown your bias for New Urban West's proposal to build 42 large houses stacked together on tiny lots in a severe high-fire area where they clearly don't belong and which is against the best interests of the citizens of Sierra Madre. Just like Measure V, where the citizens of Sierra Madre did not believe that the city council was acting in their best interests, in which case that was to preserve the character of downtown Sierra Madre, we have done what we had to do by putting this issue on the ballot. All we ask is that you let the citizens of Sierra Madre vote on Measure HR based on accurate and realistic information, and that you defer decision on the Meadows project until after that vote, so that the wishes of the citizens can be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Neuhausen.
Mr. Mayor, the last speaker card is for David Gordon.
Good evening, council. David Gordon, president of the Sierra Madre Playhouse. I don't think I do need to add much to promote the play, following the very complimentary comments of the council members who attended our first night. But I would urge everybody to go and see it. I'm completely objective and unbiased when I say it is one of the best productions that have been put on at the playhouse. It's a fantastically interesting story, wonderful acting, and terrific production. Alongside the play, each of the next four weekends, we're having a lecture on a subject related to the play, given by a distinguished lecturer. And these are free. You're encouraged to give a donation, but the lectures are free. They're at 5:00 p.m. The first one on Saturday is being given by John Malchei, who is the director of the Carnegie Observatories in Pasadena, which is a world-center place of research. And he'll be talking about Henrietta Levitt, how she made modern astronomy possible. Henrietta Levitt being the person who's the subject of the play. The following weekend, we have Dr. Yun Ju An, who is a historian of Mount Wilson, talking about women astronomers at Mount Wilson Observatory, the early years. Then, the following weekend, Kit Witten, who also is at Carnegie Observatories, is talking about women in the background, astronomy history's deep field. And the last speaker on October the 8th is none other than George Jorkowski, who is the professor of astronomy and data science at Caltech. So we have managed to get the most extraordinary lineup of lecturers to come here to Sierra Madre to give lectures that are completely free to those who wish to come to it. So I encourage you all to come to the lectures and stay to see the play afterwards. The lecture's at five, the evening performance is at eight o'clock. You have time to go across the road to one of the restaurants to have a meal in between. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Mr. Mayor, we did receive one additional card from Catherine Addy.
Hello, council, and honorable mayor and everybody. Good evening. Tonight, or tomorrow night, is going to be a night of firsts. We are, I'm speaking as block captain for the Upper Canyon, Catherine Addy on Skyland Drive. Our house is named Kit Kat Cottage, for those of you that don't know that. Tomorrow night is firsts because we're going to have our first Neighborhood Watch Block meeting with both the Upper Canyon and the Lower Canyon on Zoom. So it's our first Zoom. It's the first one being conducted by our new community services officer, Samuel Sidiqui. And it's also, it's been a long time since we had a joint meeting of both canyons. The last time was quite a few years ago, when we were concerned about a roaming mountain lion, and we had it at Mary's Market. Some of you may remember that one. But normally, we have a block party slash, you know, meeting in person. But Sierra Madre Police Department did a survey, and everyone decided that they wanted, that answered the survey, decided they wanted it on Zoom. So it's at six o'clock tomorrow night. It's both canyons, upper and lower, combined. If you need the link for that, you can email your Lower Canyon block captain, who is Kelly Artinian. That's Kelly with an I, underline, Maroo, M-A-R-O-O, at me.com. Or our Upper Canyon list is being compiled and helped out by Katrina. And it's uppercanyonsierramadre@gmail.com. So if anyone needs the information, again, uppercanyonsierramadre@gmail.com. And so this is just my little PSA Canyonite for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Addy.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Pat Alcorn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I am the president of the Sierra Madre, current president of the Sierra Madre Community Emergency Response Team. And I'd like to invite everyone to sign up for our free FEMA basic earthquake or emergency preparedness course. The first session will be on Saturday, October 15th, from eight to five. And that will be mostly a full session with the introduction, search and rescue, triage, some of the other basics that you might want. Then, on the following Thursday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, on the 18th through the 20th, at 6:30 to 9:30, there will be another sessions with the medical, fire safety, and some of the other exercises that you might need. Saturday, October 22nd, from eight o'clock to 3:30, there will be a review and exercises. And that, the Saturday is really kind of fun, because you will be practicing putting out fires. You'll be practicing cribbing, which is helping lift up a heavy object off of either someone or something that you might have to do. There'll be a search and rescue session, and then, of course, graduation. And all of this comes with a pack and your personal safety equipment. So I invite everyone to go to www.sieramadreemergency.org. And that's and that's all one word, searmadreemergency.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Alcorn.
Mr. Mayor, we have no other speaker cards.
Thank you. Okay, so that will end public comment. We'll move on to presentations. We have two of them tonight, and I'd like to see if Interim Police Chief Amos would come up and begin the proceeding.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. First, we'd like to have Reserve Officer Mitchell Thomas, if you could step up, please. If I can also have Detective Sergeant Charles Conchaminen step up as well. Recently, Reserve Officer Thomas received a certificate from a dedicated service from the California Police Officers Reserve Association. That is for his 35, over 35 years of service with the City of Sierra Madre as a Reserve Officer. And then additional, he's been a Reserve Officer for a little bit over 38 years, with, starting at Arcadia. And he found that Sierra Madre was way better than Arcadia. Way up here. I have, I myself started as a Reserve Officer with the Sierra Madre Police Department. One of my first, one of my first rides as, after I was sworn in, was actually with Officer Thomas. I had a little background in law enforcement. I was a police explorer with the Los Angeles Police Department, so I knew a little about PD. And I, one of the major things that stuck out to me was, we were actually at cursing court, sitting at the stop sign as cursing goes on to Sierra Madre. And there was an MTA bus that went through that intersection and cut some, cut someone off walking across. So I referred to Officer Thomas as Mitch. Mitch looked at me and said, "Okay, so tell me, what's the violation that was committed right there?" And luckily, luckily, I knew the, I knew the technical term of someone failing to stop for somebody in a crosswalk. Next thing I know, we take off and pull behind the MTA bus, and, okay, well, lights go on, and we're, and we're making a traffic stop. I'm like, "Okay, this is, this is new to me." So we get out and make contact with the, with the MTA driver, and Officer Thomas kindly explains to him what he did wrong. And with the preceding conversation that occurred, the MTA driver felt that he was a little bit above the law. And one of the things I saw was that Mitch was, was an individual that said, "Hey, you know what? Everybody is held accountable for something. And if you do something wrong, if you do something right, you need to be held accountable for your actions." And I stood by while Mitch Thomas went back to the patrol vehicle and came back with a citation book and issued MTA bus driver a citation. I was like, "Whoa, this is, this is how Sierra Madre rolls. This is, this is the place I want to be at." And over time, it's, it's, I've grown to embrace Mitch as a, as a father figure to me. He's very, he's very knowledgeable, has a wealth of experience in law enforcement and outside law enforcement. So with that, I, that's my little spill about Mitch Thomas. I want to turn it over to Sergeant Conchaminen. He is our current Reserve Coordinator. He works more hand-to-hand with, with Mitch Thomas, and he has a couple of words to say.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. So a little bit about Mitch Thomas. Mitch has been with the Sierra Madre Police Department for over 38 years, put it that way. He was hired on May 29th, 1984. Mitch was assigned to patrol to assist regular sworn police officers in their duties and augments regular staff levels. His duties included enforcement of laws and maintaining peace and order within the community. During his tenure, Mitch had a variety of assignments, such as background investigator for the Reserve Unit. Mitch was responsible for conducting thorough backgrounds on applicants wanting to seek position as a Reserve Officer with the Sierra Madre Police Department. This position must meet police officer standards and trainings, which is to satisfy two goals. Number one, assuring compliance with all applicable minimum standards for appointment. And two, screening out all candidates who, based on their past history or other relevant information, are found unsuitable for the position in question. Mitch has investigated hundreds of applicants, which is, which in return saves the city of Sierra Madre thousands of dollars in background investigations. Mitch also was responsible for establishing its first Reserve Motor Program. Mitch created a policy where the city did not have any, incur any costs. The motor program was a huge success, which definitely enhanced patrol enforcement and community relations efforts. Mitch's commitment to the community continued with community events, such as volunteered over 38 years of this with escorting and working motors during many city events, including the Rose Float Event, Halloween Event, Fourth of July Parade, Mount Wilson Trail Race Event, and the Wisteria Festival, just to name a few. Mitch's selflessness, commitment to volunteers' time and give back to the community was a huge impact on our patrol operations and represents the leadership and devotion to the city of Sierra Madre. Tonight, I'm going to recognize Mitch for his dedication, for his service. To be a volunteer with this department, or actually be a volunteer with the city in any way, to give yourself, to do the job in a position and capacity that he did, and hence many years, and continue on, it's a true blessing. And like Chief did mention, Mitch hired me as a Reserve Officer back in 1994. So I've been vested with the city of Sierra Madre through his leadership and through the leadership that became upon me, a future of my goal. And hopefully, when I retire soon, when this, Mitch will be side-by-side with me. So tonight, I want to recognize Mitch Thomas, and congratulations. And for, just to clarify, for Chief Amos, earlier, a couple of months ago, he did receive the Distinguished Service Award for the California Reserve Officers Police Officers Association. Mitch, thank you very much.
The, in honor of the occasion, the City Council's put together a certificate of recognition for Officer Thomas. I'd like to come up and present it to him. Can't forget my glasses. Show the cameras, certificate of recognition. 35 years, unbelievable. That is just remarkable. This certificate of recognition is from the City of Sierra Madre in recognition of dedicated service to the community of Sierra Madre to Officer Mitchell Thomas. The City Council extends its sincerest appreciation. Presented this 13th day of September 2022 by the Sierra Madre City Council, Mayor Gene Goss, Mayor Pro Tem Edward Garcia, and Councilmembers Rachel Arizmendi, Kelly Krebs, and Robert Parkers. With much gratitude, sir, we offer this to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. Here, here we are for my second presentation. So this actually was started by a former, former Chief Roger Carmelin. Over the pandemic, we've, typically, when agencies hire individuals, they bring them to a City Council meeting, they swear them in, they, they go through the process. Over the pandemic, we've hadn't had a chance to actually do that. And Chief, former Chief Carmelin wanted to present some of our employees that we have hired over that time, to introduce them to the community and the, and the City Council. So I am, I'm carrying that torch this evening, so. If I can have Reserve Officer Pierre Soraputra, step forward, please. Can I have you step over here, please? Thank you. Can I have Officer Phelan Blackwood? Officer Adams, please. Dispatcher Liliana Cortez. Miss Michelle, go back there. She left? Okay, thank you. Dispatcher Butler. So these are some of our employees that we have hired over the, over the past several years. I'm very proud of these individuals. They represent the diversity that we are trying to achieve within the agency to reflect upon the community. I'm just saying a couple of words about, about, about each of the individuals. Start with Officer Blackwood. Officer Blackwood grew up in the city, in the San Gabriel Valley, has been with the department since March of 2021. He has come from a department, he does have law enforcement background. Prior to coming to us, he worked with the Compton School Police, and he worked with the USC Department of Public Safety. But I don't hold that against him because I'm a UCLA fan. Officer Blackwood recently has been promoted to Field Training Officer. And also, he has inspired to be a part of the Foothill Special Enforcement Team, which is a regional SWAT team that the city is a part of, in the, in the future. One of the things that he, he also has taken interest in, and Chief Carmelin was guiding him into, is the direction of our Terrorism Liaison Officer. So that's another aspect that he was, he was looking into, and we were, we were starting to train him up on. He is accompanied here by his wife, Holly Blackwood, and his mother, Pamela Blackwood. Officer Blackwood is, is, is a great officer, very inspiring employee of the agency. Next is Officer Adams. Officer Adams comes to us, he grew up in the city of Glendora, correct? Yes, yes. He comes to us with previous service in the Coast Guard for, for four years. He started with the department in April of this year, and actually, I had the pleasure of recently signing him, planning him off on training, our, our Field Training Program. So you'll be seeing him riding around in a car by himself now. He does have some prior law enforcement experience with the city of Hermosa Beach. And we've had the, we've had the pleasure of actually being able to steal him away from there and get him over here. He is accompanied by his wife and his daughter. The little one that's running around in the back there, such a cutie. Next, I will be talking about Officer Pierre Soraputra. Yes, I've been practicing that all night long. He is one of our newest Reserve Officers. Like Mitch Thomas, our Reserve Officers are volunteers and don't get paid for what they do. They volunteer their time, which is a great asset to the city. He originally comes, comes to us from Indonesia. He spent most of his adult life in LA, and he actually, he holds a master degree, master's degree in Business Administration. Currently, he is, he has 20 years of experience in security and is Marsh Large Director. So he'll be, there are some aspects that we can use him in our internal training. Next, we have Ms. Liliana Cortez. Ms. Cortez comes to us with, she's been here for about three years now. She actually started as our Parking Enforcement Officer. We had that position internally, and she came to us, we were able to steal her away from the city of El Monte, which is a great asset to us. She worked for several months as a Parking Enforcement Officer. We gave her opportunity to be our dispatcher, and she's been excelling at that greatly. She currently is one of our community, one of our Communication Training Officers. So when the dispatcher starts, just like with our Field Training Program, we have community training officers that train up our new dispatchers to make sure that they are held to the standards that the department is, is requiring. She additionally is also part of the FSET. She's, she's known as a Tactical Dispatcher with, with the FSET. So we, we are, we are diverse in our, in, in our involvement in the program. She also has a degree from Cal State LA, which is, which is a great honor. It's, 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 it's one of those things that is highly achievable. And in her spare time, she likes to read and spend time with her family dog. I got to meet her dog a couple of times during the pandemic, and it's a very, very cute little, cute, cute, cute little thing. Kind of brought back some, some memories for myself, so. Lastly, but not least, we have Dispatcher Butler. Dispatcher Butler, actually, this is her second time around with the agency. She started about, let me say about five, six years ago, probably, and left us for a short amount of time, and just couldn't get enough of the camaraderie and the family atmosphere that we have at the PD. So she took the opportunity to reapply with the agency and came back to us. She is, she, like, like, like all these individuals here, she is a great employee, a very well-rounded individual, very community-minded. She's actually here with her daughter, which is sitting off, trying to, trying to hide over there. But these are some of the employees that we have hired over, over this period. We want to introduce them to you. We wanted to, one of the things that Chief wanted to do was just highlight the diversity and the depth of individuals that we achieved to bring to the community. It's, it's, it's a, it's, it's a plus for the department, it's a plus for the community, and we just wanted to highlight that. So I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for calling our attention. For calling our attention and introducing these employees to us. I've seen a few of you around, I haven't seen all of you, and I just want to, if you've come lately, or even a year or two ago, officially welcome you and thank you. I think I speak for everyone up here. We have great gratitude for the people in our Public Safety Political Police Department. Obviously, you guys are the difference between us and, and, and bad things happening. So we depend on you and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give them a minute to clear the room, and then we can continue on. Okay, so there's nobody left. Let's move on to our consent agenda. Madam City Clerk, could you do the honors, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before the City Council this evening, for consideration, are nine items on the consent calendar. Consent items A, B, and C are a consideration of approving certain demands. A is Resolution 22-56, and it is recommended that the City Council approve Resolution 22-56, ratifying payment of city warrants in the aggregate amount of $1,339,178.35. Sierra Madre Library warrants in the aggregate amount of $6,650.61. And payroll transfer in the aggregate amount of $484,765.18 for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, and also June 30th, 2023. Consent item B is the Resolution 22-57, approving, ratifying payment of city warrants in the aggregate amount of $982,269.77. Library warrants in the aggregate amount of $5,346.15. And payroll transfer in the aggregate... and payroll transfer in the aggregate amount of $467,667.32, also for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, through June 30, 2023. The third resolution for approving certain demands is Resolution 2259. This is for the approving city warrants in the aggregate amount of $666,472.18, library warrants in the aggregate amount of $6,561.36, and payroll transfer in the aggregate amount of $489,628.17, and this for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023. Consent item D is a notice of completion for fiscal year 2021 through 2022 for the water main replacement project. It is recommended that the City Council approve the notice of completion for the project and direct staff to file the notice of completion with the Los Angeles County Clerk's Office. Consent item E is a notice of completion for fiscal year 2021 through 2022 for the street improvement project, and it is recommended that the City Council accept the completed work by All American Asphalt Incorporated on behalf of the city and direct staff to file a notice of completion with the county clerk's office. Consent item F is award of professional services agreement to IB Consulting LLC for the completion of a water and wastewater rate study. It is recommended that the City Council award a professional service agreement to IB Consulting LLC for the water and wastewater rate study in an amount not to exceed $78,660. Consent item G is a joint powers agreement for the Los Angeles Area Regional Training Group. That's the RTG. It is recommended that the City Council approve the RTG joint powers agreement by adopting Resolution 2255, approving membership within the within the Los Angeles Regional Training Group Joint Powers Authority, and authorize the city manager to execute the JPA agreement to take such reasonable actions as may be required to implement the intent. And lastly, consent item H is the city's biennial conflict of interest code, and it is recommended that the City Council review and approve the city's biennial conflict of interest code as required by the Political Reform Act. Mr. Mayor, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. That's a big agenda tonight. So let's just limit this to questions at this point. I'll go down each one and see if we have any, and we'll hold off on comments until we've had finished public comment. Consent item A. B. C. D. E. F.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just had one question about the proposal put forth by IB Consulting to do the water and wastewater rate study. One of the tasks that they detail is rate workshops, and it appears that they will either hold those or facilitate staff to hold these rate workshops. Mentions that they will be held with the Water Subcommittee and the City Council. Just a question about whether those workshops, one or both, would include the public?
We have staff here can respond to that.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Krebs. The last time we did do a rate study, we did not include the public, but we did have a water subcommittee with the council representatives. This time, we could, if if that's the desire of the council.
Well, I assume if they're going to have a workshop with the full council, it would have to be a public meeting, no?
Yeah, we would have a public meeting with with the consultant.
Okay, any other questions on that item? Thank you, Director Simia.
Don't go far.
Item G.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This is the Regional Training Group. It says that there's no cost right now, but that there may be a cost in the future. Is there, maybe Chief Bartlet can answer that. Do you have, have there been any discussions about the the cost? And recognizing it's a brand-new group, they they may not know, but have they got ballpark numbers? Or is this a million dollars or $2?
Councilmember Parker, that's actually a good question, and that has not been discussed to date. The the current platform is is funded by the Homeland Security Grant, and that is what's foreseen in the near future. As as long as those fundings are being able to be upheld, we should be able to sustain it. However, in the packet that that was added on to this, there there is a discussion of how costs would be dished out to to the members of the agreement or to the JPA, should we have to go for funding. And then that could be shared costs. It could be depending on size of of agencies or cities or stuff, but nothing to date as far as a definitive answer.
Can I ask, I actually have a number, I have a number of questions on this, but I have a follow-up to that. So yeah, I saw the same provision about funding being determined in the future and allocation between the members, and that there was also a statement that, you know, no obligation, financial obligation would be binding unless the, in our case, the City Council was to approve the expenditure. Do you foresee that when the discussion around allocation methods comes up, that you're sort of bringing that back to council to discuss? Because I, you know, given the size of our city, obviously, we'd be interested in something not prorata divided by the number of members. And so I'm wondering if that that can be a subject for future discussion as that those, as the budget and discussions around allocation methods develops, that we can have an ongoing dialogue with the council before any commitment is made?
Absolutely. I share in your your same concerns as well, knowing the size of our budgets and accruing any additional costs. It does allow for us to remove ourselves from the agreement. So we do have that out, should this be something in the future where we look to to help participate in funding. And but I would definitely bring that forth to council prior to any decisions being made. So, yeah, that would be a, I guess, as seen basis.
On a more broader note, I was just wondering sort of what prompted, I mean, it seems like we've been doing joint training with a number of these agencies for some time, you know, funded by the grant from the Homeland Security Department. What what sort of was the catalyst for deciding to do something more formal under under a JPA instead of just continuing on the the current arrangement?
The JPA, from my understanding of it, is really to bring cohesion with with all the the participating members. So basically, within our region for fire service. And the the auspice behind it really is going to be for standardization and implementation between all the all regional cities that provide fire service. As as you can see now, it's really important for us, now that we've transitioned from the please, can we get some help, mutual aid, to automatic aid. We work with the neighboring communities daily now, multiple times a day. And so for us to have the same standardized training as everybody else we work with and vice versa, it's it's highly, highly advantageous to us. And the RTG, the Regional Training Group, provide outstanding materials that are being looked at nationally. A lot of things that that are being put out by the RTG is just really great, the videos and everything else. And so that even helps augment our training budget and the fact that we're not producing this type of training. We're not trying to come up with the materials and the and the protocols and standards and such. We can piggyback off of that as well. So it's it's very beneficial for us, especially at the current cost. And even at a at a minimal cost, if there was to be one in the future, it would be something to look at as well.
And then I have specific comments or feedback on the form of agreement, Alex. I don't know if you reviewed that or, and I should, I don't know, present that now? Or do you want me to present that to you in a different way in terms of conceptual comments or questions about the agreement?
I can take the question.
So in the agreement, my first question was, sorry. So there's there's sort of two questions around funding. One is, as I mentioned earlier, there is a there is a note that any contribution by any of the member agencies, that contribution would have to be approved by, you know, that agency's governing body. There isn't really a sense of what happens if that approval isn't granted. I mean, is it just that then we'd have the opportunity to withdraw? Is that really our only recourse?
In which section are you looking at, Councilmember?
It's Article 15, 1501(c) as in cat. The last sentence.
1501(c).
C, the last sentence of C.
Correct. If the City Council chose not to participate in the in the sharing of the costs, then their option would be to withdraw.
And then just a technical point, there is a, if you do withdraw, there's a process under, what is this, 1602, oh, sorry, 03B2 for refunding of any funding that the withdrawing member has made. It's not, it's 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 the, sorry, the withdrawing the withdrawing member would get a portion of their back of their money back by dividing it by the number of the existing members, which really doesn't take into account what we were talking about before in terms of how the cost might be allocated. So, I mean, frankly, that would probably be beneficial to us because we'd probably get more back than we gave. But I, you know, I just want to make sure that we we incorporate in the agreement that that methodology should match whatever the funding methodology ends up being.
So unfortunately, Councilmember, at this point, I don't know if it's possible to incorporate it into the agreement only because this is a JPA, and this JPA wasn't drafted by our law firm. It was drafted by whoever is going to be representing this JPA. And it it's composed of a number of different districts, I mean, cities. By chance, Chief, do you know how many cities are participating in this?
We we have 30 agencies that are within this. It would be.
So to amend it today would mean that all 30 cities would have to accept that amendment. And I don't know whether or not, I I I assume if this has come before the city, this is a somewhat take-it-or-leave-it agreement until an opportunity to amend it has has arrived. And I suppose the next opportunity to amend would be when they determine if there's going to be some cost sharing.
Yeah, it seemed like there was a number of further documentation going to be undertaken by the JPA, you know, their own bylaws and their own internal documentation. So maybe that that point could be addressed in their governing documents and maybe override the the agreement.
Understood. And I and I think that's, these are comments that we can take back to the JPA and and bring to their attention. And I assume they're going to have a running list of of items to consider the next time this agreement is up for consideration.
Right, okay, great, thank you.
If I may, to piggyback on a couple of those things, a couple of Councilman Krebs' comments or questions. So how, tell me again, Chief, how this is different than the training right now? I mean, there's there's the Great Training Center down in Rio Hondo. It seems like that's pretty standardized. Can you give me a little bit more of an idea of kind of how this is a step up and what more, like how we're improving the the services and the training and the expertise of of your team?
Great question, and absolutely. It is a good question to have for for the layman's terms, basically, of what we do. We do, in-house training is basically, we're pulling hose and throwing ladders and the such and working on our protective equipment and trying to get familiarized with that. This type of training, it goes deep into higher-level stuff where we don't have the special, the specialties in. Terrorism could be one, chemical, biological warfare, those kind of things. Any of our natural man-made disasters that we may have, where we're going to be not able to handle that on our own. We're going to need the assistance of our our neighbors and fellow agencies. And therefore, when we get together for those instances, we need to be trained at the same standards and the same levels and preparedness as as everybody else. So it 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 goes above what we do on our typical, normal, every day. So almost speaking to what Mr. Hood said, right? Is we need to be prepared as much as we can for the for the bigger stuff. And being part of this JPA allows us to gain on those expertise, where we have folks from LA City Fire Department, LA County Fire Department, the the folks with the deeper pockets and and a lot of resources and skill sets to bring this training forth. They actually develop it, and they will disseminate it, and 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 it's it's an opportunity we don't have. So for us to to join in on that is a big benefit for us.
Agnes, thank you. So you said 30 agencies have part of this JPA. So having been part of a JPA with more than 30 agencies, I I can, I know kind of, I have a a window into how these things work. And so I had a couple small questions related to that. So you'd be a member of the board, but I imagine there's going to be executive board and financial board and training board and, you know, cheese board. I don't know, all kinds of different parts of it. Can you tell me a little bit more on on your thoughts and conversations of how you'd like to position Sierra Madre within the the JPA? Is it, are we going to be just a a a member of the board? Do you, are you foreseeing getting involved in some of the subcommittees, in some of the leadership? Just kind of get an idea, as you're getting involved in this, what your initial, and and recognize that can change, your initial thoughts are on getting involved in it?
Yep, more good questions. My initial thought with anything is to get in there and to observe, first of all, and kind of see what the lay of the land is, see if there's opportunities for us and for our individuals. If that's recognized, then I absolutely, my my thought process is always to get little Sierra Madre involved as much as possible in the region, to to get our name out there, to get our skill sets and every, and what we have available and can offer to be part of it. I think it's important because when we when we look for that reciprocation or we ask for that help, they're going to know who we are and what we can contribute as well. So it would be an observation to see where we can fit in and and best provide our skill sets.
And then my my final question is, I, would Captain Gate Cat, Gate Cat be involved in this as your training officer and the training officer at Rio Hondo? It seems like he's kind of a key member of your staff that would be, that would need to be integrated into this. Is that your thought and intent with this?
Absolutely. Anything that has to do with the the training component for our department, Captain Gate Cat is is our training officer, and is as such, it takes the lead on anything that that would pertain to.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chief.
Welcome. Thank you.
And item H. Nope. Yeah, we'll open this up to public comment for any item on the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Well, that's fast. I just wanted to comment real quick. I mean, I'll take your motion. I just wanted to comment real quick. I'm very pleased that the water main replacement project, as we've received our notice of completion. It's kind of exciting to have that that out of the way, and I'm sure there are a lot of residents up in the area that are very pleased, too. So, nice work. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
We have some discussion just before.
Would you like some? Okay, well, be my guest. That's what we're here for.
Just three quick comments. I just echo, you know, on the Big Ben completing, that that was a difficult water project. It went on a long time. There's lots of things that were challenging. I know that the residents in the canyon were really wanting better water and and challenged by all of the changes. And I just just want to thank, you know, all of the hard work from Big Ben and staff to to get there. I'd also like to commend All American Asphalt. The streets are beautiful. They did a really good job, and they did it under budget. That's really nice as well. And then and then just kudos to the chief for for finding a JPA and taking the leadership to to join it. So thank you for for that leadership and and that initiative.
I I'd like to just add my comment. I totally agree. I've walked some of the some of that new pavement. It is really good, and the curbs, everything are lined up beautifully. Quality concrete, great work, and under budget, fantastic.
Well, I will say that despite my grilling on the funding aspects of the JPA, I am really excited about the opportunity that we are going to have. And I mean, I was really glad that Chief Bartlett was able to expand on that because I I did recognize that this catapults, you know, the our our ability to give the level of training to our officers that would not be something that we could do on our own and really leverage the regional resources in a way that makes our city safer, both because our our personnel will be better trained, but also, as Chief Bartlett said, that there'll be a relationship, a deeper relationship between us and our surrounding agencies and and their willingness and interest in serving our community will be just just further strengthened. So, yeah, I'm I'm fully in support despite my peppering of questions.
Other comments? Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
What was Nate? And I forgot to say aye. Aye. Sorry. Got too carried away there. Okay, so I lost my agenda. Hold on here. So I think we're now moving to public hearings, are we not? Yes. And so we're going to take a look at the, going to go back and take a look at the ordinance 1460, First Amendment to the Master Lease Agreement with Tower Point Capital LLC for an Tower Point Capital LLC for an extension, uh, lease area for wireless communication sites on city property. Director Samina, it's all yours.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, tonight we have a public hearing for the amendment to the existing lease agreement with power, or Tower Point, for the AT&amp;T and T-Mobile cell tower sites. The amendment consists of an extension of the existing land leased to Tower Point of two hundred and eighty-five square feet. The new area is for a storage of emergency generators at the site. The existing ninety-nine year lease agreement with Tower Point was considered and approved by the council on October twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. Current agreement with Tower Point states any additional revenue generated from lease is split fifty-five to forty-five percent in favor of the city. The additional revenue for the two hundred and eighty-five square feet equals two hundred, or six hundred and sixty dollars per month to the city of Sierra Madre. Tower Point has offered to pay the six hundred and sixty dollars per month to the city for a one-time payment of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred dollars for the remainder of the ninety-nine year lease. The payment is calculated over thirty years. However, the existing Tower Point agreement with AT&amp;T and T-Mobile expires in seventeen years. At that point, Tower Point will renegotiate terms with AT&amp;T and T-Mobile. If council elects to take the monthly payments, the city will receive fifty-five percent of the revenue generated from the new agreement in seventeen years for the additional square footage. If council elects to, elects the lump sum, the city will forfeit any future negotiated revenue for a ninety-nine year term of the lease. The council may choose either form of payment for the newly leased area. Staff recommends the council open a public hearing, receive comments from the public, and consider approving the request to execute the First Amendment to the Master Lease Agreement with Tower Point Capital LLC for the expansion of the existing leased property for the wireless communication sites on city property at six twenty-one East Sierra Madre Boulevard, and adopt the ordinance fourteen sixty, which will reflect the council's decision on the payment method. That's my report.
Thank you, Director Samina. Questions? Councilmember Parkers?
Director Samino, um, so on the top of page three of, of your report, it says, using the five percent discount rate, the annual payments, uh, uh, over thirty years are about a hundred and twenty-three, and then it says, staff has discussed and felt that the offer of, of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred is a reasonable amount to accept. But you also said that if, if we accept the a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, we forego seventy-two years' worth of, of revenue, potential revenue on this. And granted, we don't know what's going to change with technology, whether, you know, that we will have cell towers, or whether we will have satellites, or some other, you know, form of, of communication. Can you tell me kind of your thought process and your discussion about how you thought that would, giving up seventy-two years' worth of potential, potential revenue was, was a good thought? Because I, I just, I, I'm, there's something I feel like I'm missing?
Yeah. And, and I'm sorry, thanks for the question. Um, at the time of writing the, the report, um, we had, um, Finance Director Hillary, I can't pronounce her last name, I can't, yes, thank you, and, and Meet with Treasurer, Mr. Amerio. And they discussed the payment, um, and the, and the payoff for that. Um, and, and when it came to it, they, they agreed that, you know, that could be a fair amount to accept, because after the seventeen years of that lease agreement, or even in the, in the midterm of that agreement, AT&amp;T and T-Mobile can walk away from the lease. Um, and we were basing it on the last, uh, um, the last agreement that we had in two thousand nineteen of accepting their payoff for the original ninety-nine year lease. Since then, we have determined and we have discussed that it wouldn't be feasible for, for the a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, because it just doesn't add up to, to enough money for the city to consider. Um, so the, the recommendation, as, as noted in my report to you in the beginning, we weren't recommending, either way, we were hoping that the council, um, would be able to come up with a reasonable solution to that.
Is, is it, um, accurate to, to assume that, um, I'm trying to say this in, 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 in as constructive ways possible, and please take it with, with a positive intent?
Of course.
That you wrote the, the staff report and then learned more, and your position has evolved since writing the staff report?
Yes, we did.
Thanks. Good. Okay, so, so, okay.
Thanks for putting it that way.
Councilmember Parkers, if I may add, staff was attempting to, to determine the net present value of that a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to give council the best option to consider. And as you've stated, since then, we have new information, and we've concluded that taking the, the monthly payment is, is more likely a better option, as it would potentially amount to a lot more money in, in the long term.
And, and tonight, we're just getting feedback on this. We're not, we, you don't, you're getting, we would, because this is a public hearing, we would have to continue it, right? Maybe that's to, to turn to Gergosian.
I can, I can answer, and, and Attorney Gergosian can, can, can add some if, if needed. So, first of all, I, I need to apologize, the attachments, the, the council did not receive the attachments. So, um, council does not have all the information. If council wishes to, um, to continue this to a date uncertain, we can do that, and in that time, we can get all the attachments to the council for, for, for a complete review and analysis. Um, and, and so that was the idea of continuing to a date certain, to give council an opportunity to have, uh, all the attachments for, for review.
And just a clarification, so I, I thought I heard you said to a date certain and a date uncertain. Does it matter which one?
It would be, uh, the recommendation is to a date uncertain. That'll give staff an opportunity to prepare all the documents and get it to council.
Okay. That's all, those are all my questions.
Other questions?
Maybe, just to, since we have the Finance Director here, just a, just a quick one. Um, regarding processing of payments, um, so oftentimes, these buyouts are because on one, at one end, putting a, writing a check, or having a sta, someone staff from Tower Point write a check for three hundred and thirty dollars or six sixty, um, becomes expensive, um, and it makes more sense to just kind of pay it all upfront. As far as processing payments from the city level, um, does it make sense to potentially ask for maybe semi-annual payments rather than monthly? Um, is that a cash flow issue? Uh, is it more expensive to process monthly payments? We process monthly payments all the time, so I assume not, but, um, sometimes there is a cost associated with that relative to the revenue figure.
So, good evening. So, it wouldn't be a difference in cost, so much that we would consider going quarterly or rather than monthly? So monthly is, it's not an added additional to much of a cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Wouldn't you want the benefit of the amazing interest rates if we deposit it in the bank?
We would, yes, yes.
If they were amazing.
When we get to comments, we'll talk a little bit about that.
Other questions? I think that exhausts our questions, so I will open the public hearing up and see if we have public comment on anything related to this. And it doesn't look like we will, so bring this back to us. Do we want to hold this off and extend the public hearing to the next meeting?
Personally, I'd like to see the attachments.
Yeah, I think that would be the, the wise move. I don't have certainty on this.
Yeah, just some comments on the calculations. Um, yeah, I, I, we received the agenda while we're in Long Beach, and, yeah, or some of this information. I, and I went through and did my own calculations and considered some, some things, um, you know, regarding the discount rate, what's an appropriate discount rate, and, um, why isn't there a growth rate in there, all these things. Most, most leases have some kind of growth elevator. Um, well, the discount rate of five percent, whether or not that's appropriate, not so sure. Um, when we're thinking about the, the rate of return we can get on our money, our LEAF, and thankfully, um, through Treasurer Amerio's laddering of US Treasury securities, and as those go up, we can earn more, um, but we're earning probably somewhere in the neighborhood of two percent. So, maybe that's an appropriate starting number. Uh, and then when you look, think about discount rate, then you want to layer risk, right? So, not only the risk-free or what we can just get through our LEAF and through US Treasury securities, but also add on the potential of maybe this technology's going to be gone, maybe all these other things. Uh, and if you're doing something like that and adding a risk to the discount rate, actually, probably the proper term would be the ninety-nine years or whatever's left, left on that tower, uh, lease agreement, because we're, we would bake risk into the discount rate, and that would take care of the timing portion, if that makes sense. So, you know, I ran the numbers, and, you know, I, I feel, as I sit here today, just running the numbers without looking at the attachments, that I feel that, uh, taking the monthly payments, um, with potential of AT&amp;T and with potential of, um, T-Mobile, um, having increases through their own lease negotiations would then benefit us with an elevator that we would not see as, uh, Councilmember Parkers, uh, mentioned before. So, um, as I sit here even without the attachments, I'm, I'm, uh, I think we should obviously, um, go forward the lease, because it is a benefit to our residents if there is a backup power, um, there for that cell tower. That's important. Um, but as far as, as the, the mode, as I sit here now, and if we talk about it later, I'm, I'm for continuing monthly payments, or, you know, let's say Tower Point says, can we pay you quarterly? That's fine, too, um, as long as the amount's the same. But, uh, I'm not really a big fan of the lump sum, one-time payment at this point.
When you talk about risk, I, I think where I thought you were going was payment risk? And I don't know, I mean, obviously, I know AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, and I have very little credit risk concern with them. I do not know anything about Tower Point Capital and whether they were formed for the purpose of, you know, leasing this property and, and sort of subleasing to these credit-worthy agencies. So I, you know, I don't know if we have a way of assessing whether Tower Point, if AT&amp;T and, and, and T-Mobile were to back out of the lease, if they pose a payment risk. I guess that would be the counter argument in terms of, of why an upfront payment might possibly be on the table, because are we worried that if things go sideways with Tower Point's arrangement, are we, you know, are we comfortable that, I mean, I know six hundred and sixty isn't a lot of money, but if they don't exist, they're not going to have sixty-six dollars, sixty, six hundred and sixty dollars a month? Just, just, just a thought.
Yeah, and it's really, it's almost, at that point, thinking about those things, it's almost a coin flip. This, the, the, this is our, our yard where we, we, we could potentially use the property, but it's, it's, it's nice to get an extra payment that we wouldn't have otherwise, you know? And just, and for context, um, you know, throwing in, keeping the five percent discount rate and assuming in the long run, two and a half percent growth through ninety-nine years, that's more like three hundred thousand dollars. Um, if we're looking at thirty years, we're looking more like a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. So there is a, a, a little bit of a delta there, even with the five percent discount rate, um, but considering some type of, um, two and a half percent elevator, which really isn't there, because it's really a negotiation point between Tower Point and, and the carriers. Um, I don't know, you know, there is the risk that if Tower Point only has two carriers, but we know that there's a third big one, whether or not they need that, that, um, that tower or not, I don't know, and whether or not they could, and if this was an entity formed just to be on behalf of AT&amp;T, similar to the one we have, the, our Public Services, our Public Safety Building, um, but they can sublease to the other carriers. So, to your point, um, that risk, I think, is minimal be, uh, I think it's more of a technology risk than whether or not we're going to have, they're going to have a tenant there, if that makes sense.
I just wanted to comment, I think that, you know, additional analysis is, will be helpful, obviously, to see that, uh, the attachments will be helpful also. But I think there's something to be said is, you know, where is technology in fifteen years and seventeen years? And, you know, even though it's six hundred and sixty a month, it's nice, and you're thinking about, I, I can see, by the way, Mayor Protem's calculations here, and they look very impressive. It's scary. Uh, but I, I guess I'm also thinking about a hundred and twenty-two thousand, what can I do with it now, um, without the guarantee of having monthly, um, payments received? But, but that means that I, I did see that with the amendment came in, uh, request from amendment came in February, and then another letter came in August. Do we have any concerns with timeline if we're extending?
Thank you for that comment. Um, they are very anxious to have backup power, as we experienced last week. Um, they have been contacting me, well, they contact Tower Point. Tower Point contacts me, um, and tells me how anxious they are to get going with that. So, they are anxious on that. I don't want that to hinder your decision. We can always come back. Um, they've waited this long, for one thing, but the second amendment that they sent, uh, just increased that number from the first one. So that's why they sent a second, uh, letter of intent.
Councilmember Azmendi, if I may add, um, in the event of an emergency, they, they do bring emergency backup generators. They've done that in the past. Um, so, um, if there's, uh, if there is an issue, they, they do have, um, access to, to keep those, um, cell towers alive.
So I'll, I'll take a slightly different track on, on all of this. Um, I, I appreciate the, the paragraph in the staff report about, um, inquiring the use of, of batteries as backup power. You know, I, I know it's probably not infeasible, but building on, on Councilmember Azmendi's point, you know, I, I encourage, um, not only staff, but kind of everybody here, to keep an eye and an ear out for kind of, you know, backup batteries, if those get used in the applications, if there's an opportunity to be there. Um, you know, I, I'm in the camp of a, let's electrify everything. And so if there is that potential of it, if that technology's changing, I'd like us all to keep an eye out to try to, try to do that. We definitely need to have the cell towers working now, um, you know, especially in times of crisis, so it's not a reason for me to say, to, to oppose this when it comes back to us. But I, you know, it's also, you know, we're, we're kind of like an alcoholic with respect to, to fossil fuels, and so, um, we need to break that addiction and get off that. Um, and anytime we can find a way to do that, that's, that's a good, it's a good opportunity.
And Councilmember Parkers, thank you. Point well taken. And I, you know, for me, and it, it's very important to have you on the council for these reasons. Um, but when I, when I'm looking at these, this issue, when it's an emergency type of backup, I know any pollution's bad, um, but this is, this is a service to our residents, and if, if it's the only way, if battery is absolutely not feasible, um, you know, I, I hope you would consider, and it sounds like you would, allowing something a little dirtier, such as the cleanest diesel that's a, a generator that's available in order to, to run this in, in case of emergency. But again, I'm, I'm really appreciative of, of this.
And, and I have no intention of, of opposing this on, on those grounds. If, if, if I were to oppose it, it would, it would be on, on other issues, not on, on that. But it, you know, this is part of my voice and, and what I, what I bring to the council, and so, you know, and I appreciate the dialogue on it. It is that, yeah, I mean, we've, we've got to have that backup cell service in case, uh, uh, of power outages, uh, because that's how we get our information. That's how we know where, that the cooling centers are open. That's how we know evacuation routes. That's how we, in contact nine-one-one, I mean, that, that, from a, a public safety, it is critical to have that. And so that has to come first.
Okay. So we're going to extend this public hearing? Do we want to continue discussion tonight, or just hold off until the next meeting?
I'm fine holding off. I just wondered if we had a sense of if we were to, um, postpone what the next, I mean, we're talking weeks, months, years.
Thank you, Councilmember Creepz. No, I, I, we just want to take a good look at the agenda next week. Uh, next council meeting, the agenda's pretty packed, but if we can, if we can get into the next council agenda, we'll do that. If not, it'll just be one meeting after that.
Thank you.
Good. So we don't need to take any further action on this tonight, then?
Uh, the council will have to take a vote to continue the item.
Okay.
And, and the question for the council will be to continue to a date certain, which would mean that there's no renoticing requirement, or to a date uncertain, uh, in which case the, the city would have to renotice.
I think we're uncertain right now. Mr. City Manager? Okay. So is there a motion to that effect?
I, I'm not sure I agree. I, I thought that we had a date certain, because it would be the next or the one after.
That's not certain.
I thought certain, that's too uncertain. Okay. All right. So then, then, then I will make the motion to, to postpone this to a, a date uncertain.
Is there a second?
Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I'll say my aye. My timing's off tonight, so that carries unanimously. So we will have this either first or second meeting in October, and we can finish it. I think it's going to go pretty quickly, but we'll see. Okay. And a second public heating, uh, hearing, first reading ordinance number fourteen fifty-eight, amending chapter seventeen point eight-eight, temporary use permits of Title Seventeen zoning of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code.
Thank you, Mayor. City Attorney Gergosian will be presenting.
Uh, council, the city council has considered this item a number of times. They last considered this item at their July twenty-sixth meeting. At that meeting, direction was provided to the city attorney to come back, uh, with three primary amendments. The first is to adopt a set of use standards similar to what we have in the filming ordinance. The first is to adopt a set of use standards similar to what we have in the filming ordinance. Second, a process to deviate from those standards with the approval of 75% of residents within 250 feet of the property, again, similar to the filming ordinance. And lastly, a general reorganization of the ordinance to mirror what we have in the filming ordinance. Because those weren't substantive edits, but more inform, this didn't go back to the Planning Commission, but this comes before the city council, again, for first reading. And if Mr. Milan wouldn't mind scrolling down to section 17.88.035. A little further, yep, that's it. This is the primary edit. This section did not exist in the previous version that you had viewed, and this edit is intended to mirror the language that we have, or the structure we have in the filming ordinance. So, just to summarize the key points, substantively, nothing has changed. The ordinance still reads that a property is limited to four temporary use permits per year. The duration of a use permit, outside of the Measure V area, is a 24-hour period, and within the Measure V area is a 40-day period. The timing is 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday. For noise, all noise restrictions are subject to what we have in the code. For parking, again, everything we have in the code. For street closures, a traffic study shall be prepared and submitted with the application for any street closure, which is what we have for the filming ordinance. The lighting provision mirrors the language we have in the general plan, which says that lighting shall be shielded and directed in such a manner as to not directly impact surrounding properties. And a section has been added regarding approved deviations, that again mirrors what we have in the filming ordinance. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, it's pretty straightforward. Questions?
Two questions.
Yes.
So, the first one, is the filming ordinance, is it Monday through Saturday?
The filming ordinance is Monday through Saturday.
Okay, and we decided to do through Sunday in this one?
Correct.
And any difference in time, are they both?
They're both 7:00 a.m. to 10:00, 10:00 p.m., yes.
Okay. And then, it's a tangential question, so where are we in the process of the master plan and CUP for Alverno? Since people could, you know, a lot of this is driven by Alverno, I know it's not on the agenda tonight, but when do we think we'll see that? Just so I've got it in the back of my mind.
The city council won't be reviewing that agenda item, that's for the Planning Commission. And the city council will review it if there's an appeal.
Got it, okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, I know we've addressed this before, probably multiple times at our multiple meetings on this topic, but I just want to clarify again, because it does show up in the revisions to this version for the reading tonight, and scroll towards the top of attachment A, it's 1788020. Yeah, keep going, yeah, it's right, it's right, it's right near the beginning of the, so just a little bit down, where the, yes, that, just that, yeah, sorry, backup. Keep going, yep, right here. So, B1, so, this is a list of exemptions, meaning that these are the types of things that you could do that would not necessarily be in conformity with your property's zoning, but would not require a TUP. And we went through this a couple of times, I just want to have it very clear for the record. Number one is small events, which are gatherings of less than 25 people. Number two is house parties, which is specified as private, non-commercial gatherings of up to 75 people. Now, the way I think that would be interpreted is that, number one, because it does not designate it as private, non-commercial, that, number one, could include commercial gatherings of less than 25 people, and that would not require a temporary use permit. And I know we've had residents express concerns about neighbors essentially having multiple commercial events that could be less than 25 people, and I just want to make sure that we provide the public with the information as to if that is occurring on a regular-ish basis, that there are, my understanding is that there are other ways of addressing that that would not be specific to the TUP permitting process.
Yes, Councilmember Crebs, allow me to explain the rationale for that 25-person threshold, and then I can address what happens if there are events involving people, that are, involving events with less than 25 people. So, first, city staff was trying to develop a regulatory framework for permitting temporary events. In doing so, they had to draw a line somewhere, because a regulatory process is only as effective as its enforcement, and staff felt it'd be overly burdensome to even attempt to regulate small events of five, 10, 15 people. And so, for that reason, the threshold established was 25 people. And so, this, when it says, "Small events, gatherings of less than 25 people are exempt from the temporary use permit," that means they don't have to get a temporary use permit. But that doesn't necessarily mean that they can then use that property for whatever commercial purpose they want in a residential area, because the R1 code limits what is a permitted and what's not a permitted use. And a commercial use of a home, of a single-family home, or any property in an R1 zone without a conditional use permit, is not a permitted use. And so, for that reason, if staff determines that a site is being used for commercial purposes in the R1 zone, they won't be enforcing against that property owner through a temporary use permit ordinance, they'll be enforcing against that property owner through the R1 code provisions.
Thank you.
City Attorney Gergosian, this would also be R2 and R3, it's within the residential, correct?
Correct.
Not just R1, okay.
Correct.
And is there an exemption for entrepreneurial overlay?
There is an exemption for entrepreneurial overlays. That operates really in conjunction with all these, so if I can explain these three concepts, you'll have a residential zoning district, and then in that residential zoning district, if you'd like to operate a commercial use for a temporary period, one day, you get a TUP. If you'd like to operate for an extended period of time, you get a CUP, assuming a conditional use permit would be granted. If a conditional use permit isn't granted, you might apply for a variance. I apologize, you can't apply for the variance because variance doesn't apply to uses, so only conditional use permit. Now, some residential zones have what's called an entrepreneurial overlay, where certain kind of commercial activities are permitted without applying for a conditional use permit. And so, if that answers your question, those are the ways those three concepts interact, the temporary use permit, the overlay, and the residential zones.
It does, and it just, this question occurred to me as we're having this discussion. Yeah, I don't think I say any language regarding entrepreneurial overlay, but that's within our code, so I'm assuming it's contemplated kind of outside of the temporary use permit purview, anyway.
Right, and if I could invite maybe a member of planning staff to explain if I missed anything regarding the entrepreneurial overlay, I believe that wasn't removed in the last round of edits to the zoning code, but Director can correct me if I'm wrong.
When we reviewed the entrepreneurial overlay zone, we did make some additions to what is permitted in that zone, that was all part of our commercial ordinance updates. But regarding specifically TUPs, there would not be any changes to that.
And Director, did we strike the entrepreneurial overlay language, or did we maintain it in our last round of edits?
I believe we maintained it, we maintained it.
Can I follow up on the questions on this section? I'm scratching my head a bit on one and two. Why do we have both in there? Yeah, I mean, it seems like you almost need, just don't need one, so let me, why do we need one?
The, right, the, we were contemplating different types of events. So, for number two, we were thinking about the Christmas party at someone's home. And so, if it's a private, non-commercial gathering of up to 75 people, family and friends at, for a Christmas party, that's not something subject to a TUP. If, however, your private, non-commercial gathering for, let's say, a Christmas party is 200 people at your home, that could impose a burden on the city and the neighboring residents, and for that reason, we would ask you to get a TUP, so you could go through the noticing process and let people know what's about to happen at your house. For the small events, we were contemplating different things. So, we were contemplating potentially commercial events, and we felt that for commercial events, a smaller allowance is more appropriate, given the fact that it's an R1 zone and there shouldn't be commercial events happening to begin with. But if they are happening, we'll try to regulate them up to that 25% threshold.
I think we're good with the questions, thank you for your responses. Let's open up the public hearing now and see if we have public contributions, public comment.
Mr. Mayor, there were two emails received on the public, on public hearing item number two. The first from Lisa Pulio and the second from Sunny Sultani. Both emails were forwarded to the city council, and they're both available on the city's website for public access and transparency. I do not, I did not receive any yellow cards from speakers for this item.
Thank you. So, let's talk about it.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to comment, I, you know, I know we haven't talked about this for a few weeks, and it's hard to refresh, and you're reading everything, but I think staff and City Attorney Gergosian really captured everything that we were concerned about, and ensuring that it really mirrored what we were considering before the movie. So, I'm happy to see this, and again, thank you for the reminders as to why we thought through some of these items and some of the thinking from staff. I think it was well thought through, and I appreciate, again, staff in just putting forward something that we had requested.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to commend staff and the city attorney's office for presenting this in such a crisp, clear manner. We've gone, as mentioned, we've gone through this many times, as has the Planning Commission, this could have gotten very complicated in terms of the changes and marking what has happened from phase to phase, and I think it's really been a pleasure reviewing something that is so straightforward, and it's easy to understand what's changed, and then the summary of the nature of the changes was really helpful as well, so I appreciate that.
I concur with both of you. Did you have a comment, Councilmember Parkers? Okay, is there a motion in favor of this?
I move to, is it the first reading that we're moving for tonight? So, I move to adopt the first reading of ordinance 1458, is that the correct language here?
Yep. Is there a second?
Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Nope, no nays, all unanimous. Okay, that finishes the business tonight. Are there any items for future agendas? Did you have one?
Sorry, I'm very active tonight, sorry. I had two. One, I do think we got really just, I was surprised by the volume of folks that were reaching out with respect to the bike lane changes, you know, engendered by the change in the parking lot, parkings for the library, and so I'd love to just sort of look at maybe options there. I'm not necessarily, at this point, in favor of, you know, removing the parking arrangement that we've done, but I would like to hear, you know, kind of what other options there might be, if there are, or what, you know, what other considerations we should be thinking about. I do know that a number of the folks who commented, or a few of them mentioned that, you know, there was plenty of parking in the library already, why do we need more parking? And I want to point out that we obviously have a, you know, long-term plan for renovation of the library, and it's possible that the existing parking behind the library, you know, will be part of that expansion. And so, I do think there was an amount of forward thinking in terms of reconfiguring the street parking to allow for the fact that it's likely that some of the existing parking will not be there after the expansion is underway. And then my other, my other question was just, I think this is something that came up previously, and I just, I don't think I've seen it, and maybe I missed it, but there was at one point a talk about a sidewalk study and planned for repairs, you know, similar to the street, the street study that we do, and I just don't know what happened with that, and if I missed it, I apologize.
Thank you, Councilmember Crebs. The sidewalk study has been completed. Staff is, we're just looking for the right opportunity to bring that to council, so it will be probably within the next, the next two council meetings as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, two small things, just to, I think they're on the docket in the future. Well, one I think is on docket is a strategic plan, and it'd be nice to hear kind of the latest on that, since we did that, probably be good to get that before the election. And the other, I think, considering the concerns in the Upper Canyon, I would encourage a visit from Southern California Edison, we haven't had them here in a while, and to help, you know, once we get an after-action report, have them come and talk to us about what happened and what they're doing about it, and what we might be able to do as a city.
And I've got an item, too, I'd like to have a conversation about possible city funding of the Sierra Madre Playhouse capital campaign.
Mayor, did you have a, did you have a number in mind for us to consider and bring back to council?
Not really, I mean, I, we can talk about it. I know what Sierra Madre Playhouse would like, and I don't think we're going to be offering them that, but I think that's something that I would like to see discussed, and see if we have any.
I'd like to see kind of the staff presentation on it, and kind of, you know, they've got a plan that they've put together, and so it'd be interesting to see how that fits in with the city plan.
Right.
Yeah, I think, kind of piggybacking on that, one of the important facets to study is the transmission, right? So, are we, do we have a pot of money in place that can then fund a non-city-owned asset? That's obviously a big concern, we want to make sure, if we're considering this for the benefit of the entire community, that we're doing it correctly, if that makes sense.
And it's also important to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Also, I think it's important to keep it in context with all the other things, and we had a visit from the Sierra Madre Women's Center, that, you know, they were kind of talking about money. We've got the...
We were getting into a conversation.
My apology, we kind of stepped into a discussion here.
We'll take this all up.
It's thinking about it from a broader perspective, I think is, is my point on it, is, it's not, the Playhouse is one, but we have other historic buildings in town that are important, so let's not just limit it to the Playhouse, let's have the broader conversation on it, you know, because we've got, okay, I'm sorry.
So, Mayor, just to be clear on the direction, is this for, to, for a donation to the Playhouse, or broader?
Well, I think we could talk about when we have this on the agenda, I would like to just focus on the Playhouse, but I think part of that conversation is a discussion of the other potential uses of our city monies. So, I take Councilmember Parker's point.
Well, and I think that is wrapped up in Mayor Protam's comment, that the source of funding might implicate the need to consider a donation more broadly.
And, Mr. City Manager, if we're not expecting an update on the Richardson House and Lizzie's, and if we could get, maybe within the next few months, an update on what's going on there with as far as renovations, or deferred maintenance-type issues.
Thank you for that, Mayor Protam, and we are prioritizing all of our capital improvement projects for this year. The improvements to the police building, the library are the two that we're working, currently working on. We're also working on water main replacements... We're also working on water main replacement, and I think the Richardson House is about fourth, fourth or fifth in the queue.
Thank you.
Any other ideas? Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.